Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we can get started. Matt Fruth is on election duty today. So I am vice president who will be convening this session. And I'd like to take the role. Christina Rogers. Virginia Bloom. Ted Poses here. I don't see our secretary, Marina.
Hi, I'm here. I think Suzanne's not gonna make it.
Okay, thank you. So we have one virtual member and four people here, so we have a forum. So I'd like to call the meeting to an end. And the first item, I believe, is to approve the minutes.
Do we need to? Make sure Madarina can participate or she should not participate?
I believe that the, as Matt Fruth would say, the governor's orders are still in place. I'm not absolutely sure, but we have a forum in any case. And so we welcome Madarina, if not as a board member, as a guest.
I'll, I'll try to be appropriately quiet.
So if I can ask for approval of the January minutes. As amended, we sent the amendment. Earlier this afternoon, which included a couple of items, the actual reading of the statements from two members of the public, which were included in the minutes. And we will deal with that issue of whether or not to include actual statements from people in the minutes in future meetings. And there is a policy statement that we will be talking about later, where it is up to the board to determine whether these should be included. This is an appendage for the files, the library, or to be included in the minutes. But we've decided, Matt decided, executive decision, to include both the comments of Rory O'Neil and Peggy from the last meeting. So those are included in the minutes as of 3:00 PM today. So do I hear an approval for the minutes for the January 2023 meeting? Thank you. Since we don't have a secretary, I assume that somebody's gonna be taking minutes? Okay, thank you. So Colleen approves the minutes and Virginia was the second. Thank you. All those in favor? Say aye. My computer's going dark here.
Um, I, I don't know, should I? Hi. I feel like I made everyone start, but I, do I, do I vote just to have it on record? Or no, I mean, in, in this case, it's kind of weird anyway, because I would have to abstain since I wasn't there for the last meeting. So I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for me to approve the minutes, but I, I don't know. What is the, does anybody have?
Oh, but a conditional approval. I'm sorry, because I know that two meetings ago, when I was not present, but I was here virtually, there was a little confusion as to whether or not I could vote. So maybe we make it a conditional that you don't approve the minutes, but you have to abstain because you weren't here last, last month.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So that's an actual item that's been done. We have one person who has asked to make public comments, and that is Rory O'Neil. Please, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rory O'Neil. I respectfully request that what I say tonight be added to the board meeting minutes. My reason for speaking to you tonight is to place before you a very difficult question. A question pertaining to the subject matter that I've discussed with you in the past several months. It is a question that needs to be asked publicly. It is a question that needs to be answered publicly. It is a question that needs to be asked and answered, F for no other reason than to rule out its possibility. Before I ask that question, I will reiterate something I said to you last month. Jocelyn Dixon plays no role whatsoever in the circumstances I've described to you in the past, and I'll describe you again tonight. In a word, Jocelyn Dixon is innocent. Now, I ask you, has corruption come to the Oak Park Public Library? Again, I ask, has corruption come to the Oak Park Public Library? That difficult question has a minimum value of at least $35,000. To recap, for the contract year August 2021 through August 2022, 10 facts of contracted work that Alpha Building Maintenance Services failed to do can be found in the August 30th, 2022 Board Approved Meeting Minutes. You have videotaped evidence of that. In spite of those failures, Alpha submitted invoice after invoice in full for work they did not do. You have those invoices. Again, your administrators paid in full for work that was not done, and you have those canceled checks. Again, I ask, has corruption come to the Oak Park Public Library? Is that not a valid question? Recently, a much better man said to me and others, all it takes for corruption to flourish is for good men and women to do nothing. So far, ladies and gentlemen, you have done nothing. Thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Thank you. And Mr. O'Neil, one of the things we will be talking about later in the meeting is whether or not we absolutely have to have the public comments in the minutes or not. And the policy statement, and one of the things that the board does is to, it creates policy among its three functions, setting policy, appointing the executive director, and promoting the library. The policy statement will say that it would be up to the president of the board to determine which public comments would go into the minutes. But certainly, all public comments will become part of the library file. And any citizen deserves a response. So understood. Thank you. We did receive a public comment at 4:16 PM today. It was forwarded to me by Matt Fruth. And in talking with Jocelyn, we decided that we will allow Matt Fruth to respond to this comment by a citizen, Dan Gilof, but we will publicly table that to the March meeting. I have the statement in front of me, but I think that this is something that Matt would like to deal with, and it has to do with the physical newspapers in the, in the library. And I'd like a chance for staff to confer with Matt Fruth before we respond to Mr. Gilof. Okay, thank you. My computer keeps going dead. So we have trusty comments. Any trusty comments? And the calendar, one point that has come up is that there was the suggestion about movable feasts, that is holiday schedules, and I think that that is something that probably Billy can speak to. There was this issue with how we're gonna deal with holidays, and I don't know if that's something that will come up late in, later in the meeting and staff reports.
If you recall, we voted for 2023, and we have time to talk about 2024, so it'll be an opportunity to discuss.
Thank you. So the executive director report, Jocelyn, take it away.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. You have my report in front of you. I won't read it to you, but I definitely wanna point out some highlights. I've had, I've had quite a few meetings, as you can see. I'm still meeting, reading, and getting to know the community, which is important to me. So I've been active with the Chamber of Commerce. I've met with liaisons in the community. We did, I did go to Little Learn X. As you know, I am a councilor for the American Library Association. So just like you all on the side, policy as board members, that's the role I have. So I'm proud to do that. I'm proud to shape our, our organization that represents librarians across the country. So that was in New Orleans. So that was, that was nice to be in New Orleans when it wasn't 190 degrees in January, so that was also great. We, speaking of organizations, we are back with Urban Library Council. I mentioned that last time. And so in conversations with you all about making the firm statements about our freedom to read and a library for everyone, one of the things that the Urban Library Council has is a direct declaration of democracy. So I've included it here. It's not a policy or anything like that. It just, it basically says, we are in support of what they do in terms of doing for you to read and intellectual freedom and being a convenient for civic engagement, et cetera, et cetera. So you see the statement there. So ourselves, as Oak Park Public Library, a lot of other libraries across the country have signed on and said that we are supporting this declaration of democracy that ULC has put forward recently. It was just when I came that they did that. They had a meeting in November in person, and they created this document. So I think it's a, it's a great, like, it underscores what we already are communicating out. Another thing on the topic for tonight is, Virginia, you actually gave me the inspiration to, to explore us being a book sanctuary, and I think this goes along nicely with that. So there's some more to come. Let me get to that part about that. So any questions about my report?
So we will be speaking of book sanctuary a little bit later in the meeting.
In the policy section. So you also see the library strategic priorities report, and you see some updates on areas that we have been working on. And there again, I won't read it all to you, but I hope you have had a chance to review it. And I wanna normalize doing this every meeting, so I have another, we had Stephen Jackson last time give us kind of an overview. You see our leadership team here with us at the meeting. So tonight, to give you just kind of an overview of how this, some of our work gets into the strategic plan, we have Rob, Rob Simmons, who is our director of Social Services and Public Safety. So he's gonna give you just like a brief overview. It's a great time because it's a new year still, but I'll be doing this throughout the year though. I'll have an opportunity. I think it's, I think it's important for me all to hear from them too. So Rob, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. So good evening, everyone. You know, I'm very excited. I wanna really update everyone on two initiatives around equity for individuals who are experiencing a mental illness in the community. And there's another initiative that we are partnering with, with community stakeholders around offering us other resources for individuals who are struggling with substance use disorder, particularly with opioids. And I can tell you, I've been working in the community for 18 years now. The past two years, the collective spirit of municipalities particularly working together, I feel like it's at its highest point, and it's very encouraging. It really is. We recently, back in November, I was invited to represent the library on an alternative village manager, alternative call response task force. So we're really looking at this as a group of experts, community members, specialists. They serve individuals suffering from mental illness. And particularly, we're looking at alternative call responses, instead of calling the police, having embedded social workers or outreach workers that are within the community. It's been really awesome to learn about the current model with Rob and the police department. We are all at a table to really create a newer model to make sure that it's comprehensive. So instead of having the community to call the police, then we have other options. Social services, people, outreach people, things of that nature. We're also looking at two as a task force, two models. One in Denver, they have an embedded social worker, and in Portland has a coot's model. So those are models where there's, one is an outreach model, and one is an embedded social worker model within their village, their city department. So we're learning a lot about those models. We're learning a lot about some changes that needs to happen with the current model. But then most importantly, we're gonna have recommendations for the village manager at the end of March.
Sorry, is the, is the idea to divert calls from 911 or to have 911 triage?
So triage and divert. I think right now it's coming over the system so we can categorize that, right? With, with, within the call office or whatever, and then making sure that we have some models to look at and recommend. So I think we're in a good spot to make some sound on recommendations. Another initiative is the opioid overdose kits available to the public in Oak Park. We're partnering, the villages, health departments really spearheading this initiative. So we have partnered with the villages to lead, but also Park District, Oak Park Township, CTA, and the metro to distribute the Knox boxes or Narcan nasal spray throughout Oak Park at no cost. This is huge. This is huge. The key, the key locations throughout the community will be Village Hall, the public works building, CTA and Metro, Oak Park Police, or Oak Park Public Library branches, Maple Park, Scoville Park, and Oak Park Township. And that's just to name a few. There will be other sites scattered throughout the community where people can have those accessible and available. We're gonna work with NIPF organization to train our staff on just basic awareness, community awareness around the issue. Also harm reduction, information, and then how to just safely distribute the Knox boxes. So public patrons, whoever can come to our branches, if we have them available, they'll be able to receive it on the Knox box.
Will staff be trained on how to administer?
So we, so that's a part of the training. Our expectation is for staff not to have to administer it.
So these are four people.
There are four people, yeah. And there's a lot of research, and I'm glad that Public Health Department is really introducing this model. There's just more research on people having it available, any one of us. And if you're a bystander, you know, you can save a life if you have the nasal spray. So I'm really excited about us having that, though, that, that resource available within the next couple of months.
So Rob, in that regard, I carry a happy pen, and there is a good Samaritan law in Illinois that if I see somebody and I think that going to an allergic shock, I can administer that, and I will not be held medically responsible for that. Is it the same way with, with this?
There is a good Samaritan Act that is attached to Narcan and distributive, or actually applying it. So nasal spray or even injection, so yes, thanks.
But I think we were talking about this earlier. An overdose is not the situation that's happening. It has no effect. It can't adversely.
Right, so, so yeah, you accidentally administer it to someone, it will not have any ill effects on, on the body. So that's, 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 that's important to mention as well.
I'm assuming each of these kits has some of this information in it?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, no, that was my question was, we're asking a lot of questions. Are we making sure the question?
So, so, so the kits come with like an ADD box that they're very straightforward directions, instructions on how to administer it, and then of course calling 911 and waiting for help to come.
What's the shelf life?
About a year. They say you can go to about 14, 16 months before they've asked for body.
Are we planning to have any return spaces or safe places for people to return them if they haven't been used after 12 months?
So my question with the public health department is that right now the township has opioid, not distribution, but a place we can safely dispose of that. So another layer to that is talking about like us and other locations to have safety disposal, you know, options within, within the community. And then for our pilot program, so at the end of January, our public safety team, they began wearing body cameras. Our manager of public safety, Aaron Amazo, for at least a couple of years now, has been thinking about ways, tools, via technology, different things to be able to de-escalate situations. Because we don't carry, and we will never carry, you know, weapons, things of that nature. What we have is de-escalation skills. And he proposed like just trying to have a pilot of body cameras, because not a day he says that it de-escalates and forces people to really talk things out because behavior usually, when, when cameras are on, people present differently. So what we are experiencing within the first, I would say, month of the pilot is that that is happening. We have more people noticing the cameras. They just have more questions, and then there's been a couple of times where somebody is extremely agitated, but it gives us at least a pause to be able to say, hey, can we be able to de-escalate someone? So there won't be imminent threat of, of danger or harm or anything of that nature. So, so far, it's, it's going really well. I would say that in another month or so, when the pilot ends, we're gonna come together as a staff and then also consult with board as well as I think this is something we probably want to move really forward permanently for our public safety staff. This is something that's very important. It also is a tool to, you know, transparency and also help with our staff being safe at all times. That's very, very important. That goes into morale. That goes into a lot of other things as well.
You said right now there's two members of the team?
There are four members, so three full-time, one part-time, part.
Are they all part of the pilot? They all have?
Yes, they are part of it and here it looks like. So it looks, it's, it's non-invasive, meaning it's, uh, yeah, really presented as like walkie-talkies, things of that nature. They're not huge. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback from staff and patrons. Like, I think that's a great idea. You know, there's patrons sometimes when we have to call the police, particularly if there's someone experiencing mental illness or there's just violence involved, there's a lot of times where we're left with is our word against theirs. So any additional layer of documentation is huge. It also adds an additional layer of, only, I would say, stationary cameras catch, catch so much. I mean, there's been times now where we've used one of those to be able to identify patrons that we wanted to follow up with, because we had a ground level face-to-face view of that person. So those, those strategies are very helpful, and, you know, we're going to keep, you know, gathering data. Our S and A reports have decreased since, since then, which is interesting.
Have we seen any pushback from patrons or staff?
I have not heard of any, any pushback. I haven't gotten a call. I don't think Jocelyn has. I don't think any of our committees have.
When you walk in, if you remember, we also have a sign that says you can be videotaped anytime you walk in. So this, it's, we did do our homework with our council as well to make sure we were able to do this.
Yes, Illinois statute, it's basically body cameras are such as stationary cameras on the public spaces. So we, we, there was no issue pushed back of us.
Does this have any insurance implications? I mean, does it lower our insurance for this? We have a chance to kind of say this really happened. It wasn't that he said, she said.
So I don't, so if there were a situation where we had to actually use that footage, I mean, it first starts with adjudication and the process on the front end of kind of what actually happened. You know, I think that's, that's the biggest process. I think it's most important to get into what actually happened. And then I would say, police departments across the country are, you know, they say they use de-escalation, but also it increases violence and things of that nature. So there's just a lot of data around that of like, you know, of importance of having that. Now, for insurance purposes, I haven't heard of any, you know, I would say data that I'm looking at to say that it has insurance implications for our organization. The most important thing is that when things happen, if it's our word against theirs, we don't have the footage. There is a blind spot and one of our staff members happens to be face-to-face with someone, it's audio landing. And it also shows a lack of transparency on our part as well. We have, have our feedback with patrons that also appreciate that.
But it's not running all the time. It's only?
Yeah, it's not running all the time. So in cases where there is imminent threat of violence or threatening incense, whatever is about to happen, or we have to need assistance from Oak Park Police Department, that's when they will be activated. So they will not be activated throughout the duration of a shift for a public safety team member.
And then nothing's happened, not at all?
Nothing's happened, it's not all, all the time. And we've, we've used it twice apparently. So this is, these are, these situations fortunately don't happen often. But we definitely need to be positioned, particularly of when things do happen, that we have enough information, precise information, accurate, to make sure we can give a full, full story. Because if we don't have that, you know, a lot of people on the, on the other side of that who may get arrested, they could get jammed up and poor information, things of that nature as well. Are there any questions? Now I'm going to share my screen again, not for me. It's for, uh, it's for, yes.
So next up, we have the core use statistics, and Elizabeth wanted to speak to those. So as she comes forward, if you wanna scroll to the core use, which is the next part of the report.
Here we go. Okay.
Let me. Basically, I want to say that there is an error in the report packet. You look at page 11. Under statistics, you may notice that a very, very long number for Wi-Fi usage. And it's not something that suddenly people start using our Wi-Fi. Again, it's human error. We entered wrong number. So it's already was, is corrected on the website. So instead of not even close to 4,000, Wi-Fi usage is over 16,000, 16,693, which is more than average during, let's get it. So I just want to point out and apologize for human error. But on the public website, under statistics, there are different numbers, and also in that next, the monthly report, we would include, we would include the correct number and correction.
You, you knew what my question was gonna be. I was like.
But, you know, because I don't think it's also be looked, if you're.
Yeah, so basically you want to know what the error was, that we entered Mace and Main, basically, so we entered Mace location twice. And so it does enter for Mace and for Main, and you know, Mace has much lower than Main and Main. So this was the error, and apologies. Very important service we provide.
Keeping this on our notes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then the last part of my report, on the additions and terminations. We've had some opportunities to give people some changing jobs, some emotional opportunities, as you can see. So those are there for each review as well.
I actually had a question about the meeting reviews, because I.
It's like the roof, right?
Yeah, I, I don't see the previous ones, but I see the average for 22. And we're above it, and it's not soon, right? Where it's actual, actual. So are these like community groups? Are, is it students studying? Like, what are, doing, what we're seeing?
What do you think it is? You want to, somebody wants to speak to that?
Well, the meeting rooms are broken out separately from the study room. So is increased meeting room use from organizations and health information? So yeah, people are back to some of the.
People are back to some of the life.
And the financial report summary. I did have one question that Jeremy has has. Helped me with. There was this really strange figure about the interest revenue received. Almost eighteen thousand dollars in January, where we received only ten thousand dollars from the. Illinois Fund all of last year. I noticed that while it talks about. Our library conservatively budgeting ten thousand dollars in total interest for this year. When you go to the budget itself, it says sixty thousand dollars. And I think that we'll just make that correction. And it gives us an extra fifty thousand dollars, doesn't it? It's a more correct budget. Yes, what that was, was I looked at last year's budget. So the ten thousand dollars was last year's. When I wrote this and then we had updated it fiscal year change. So this year we have sixty thousand dollars marked. For revenue for that budget line. So we're still thirty percent into that. So projections for this year should be good as long as those interest rates hold. We should still come up quite a bit ahead of what we expected this year. Thank you, Ted. Thank you. Any other questions on with? Financial report. And I think this is not an action item, so you can go forward. Yes. I'm trying to go through my email here, paper, I'm an old-fashioned guy. The community foundation funds, I think would be the next. Item. And I did have a question. I I noticed that we have had a new. Legacy, which I think is probably partially been funded from Barbara Ballinger's estate. And I was wondering if we or if the staff. To decide on it, should that money be used for a specific purpose by future Barbara Ballinger lectures or is it only the general funds?
What? How do we fund the Barbara Ballinger right now? Ted asked me that. And I mean, I just, it's something we can definitely consider. We have Jeremy holding to the side. Is that right? While we figure out what we are going to do with the funds.
Yeah, these are the Barbara Ballinger request was unrestricted. Basically a gift. And so there are no restrictions on use. So it was, it has been put into our general fund balance, but it's part of the total cash available that you see there. And we do expect additional funds. I think the estimate was around thirty thousand dollars in addition to that. But it's it's up to the library, I don't know, I mean, how to use that. So it's it's unrestricted gift, but it's also not taxpayer dollars. So I know there was some consideration that. Jocelyn's my idea Jocelyn had to.
That we're all talking about in the staff. So yes, that could be a possibility as well.
Are there any questions on? Statements of revenue and expense and reconciliation? If not. Cash dispersments. We do need to then make a resolution. Thank you. So a resolution on dispers- dispersments resolved at dispersments for the month of January twenty twenty-three. In a total amount of one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and ninety cents. As detailed in the cash dispersment journal and general ledger and summarized with the adjustments for credits and the statement of income and expense. For that month, you ratified, confirmed, and approved. Is there? Is there a motion? A second. Those in favor? But I don't do this for a living. Next comes the promised public comment at board meeting policy. And this is the work our consideration to be approved. I it is in the it's in the in the packet. But I think if I could just summarize it rather than read the whole thing.
Sure. And that's part of, there's a few policies to prove. So that will be a section to do that. So yes.
But basically, this is what I want to speaker requests to append written statements for responses to the minutes. This is not favored. However, the board president can have the authority to determine procedural matters. To have those things in the minutes. And so when we approved the January minutes this year. We did include the public comments of two people from the community. But the in this policy, this will be something that won't necessarily. Have to be a part of the minutes. So these would be documents, these would be. Petitions, these kinds of things. These would go into the library files, but not necessarily into the minutes because the minutes serve as simply. Kind of overview of what's going on. And so this this policy really has. Nothing to do with our communication directly with public comments. We will do that as we've always done that and looking to staff first. And not not making public board comments right after public comments in in a board meeting.
Well, the other thing is that we have, I think we all had discussions at other meetings. And so this is why I came to here, because we don't have a policy. We had a procedure in place. We looked at some other local libraries for inspiration on forming a policy. This is very similar to Stogie's policy that they have in place. And so this just gives some framework to. So the public understands what to expect. So we understand what how our response to be framed. But Ted is capturing is is mostly a number nine. And it's not only that. It, you know, it tells how long people can speak. It also gives us a framework for like putting this over there where people sign it so they can see it, putting it online. Saying it maybe every meeting. So we before we read it out and actually say a lot of this stuff so people know. Because I I recall in January, there was a discussion around, you know, we don't want people. We don't want a misunderstanding about what people expect in terms of when they make comments to us. So everybody's on the same page. So this is an option to get everyone on the same page. Everyone may not agree with it. Everyone may not love it. But it just, it gives us, you know, it gives an idea of what to expect. It gives us a guidebook on how to proceed.
Is there a particular reason why? It's opting to add them to the file rather than minutes themselves? Is there specific?
Which number are you with, yeah?
I think it's number nine. Speaker requests to append written statements and correspondence to the minutes are not favored. Generally, written materials presented to the board will be included in the library files rather than in the minutes. Is there a particular reason why it would be in the files rather than in the minutes?
I I to me, that's saying, I I had this conversation a little earlier because we do minutes. We're not doing the transcript. And then that just keeps it very, you know, this person spoke and it keeps it very.
So it keeps the written versus the spoken public comments at an even level by not. Putting them in the minutes where we can put something written in the minutes verbatim, that's something that was spoken would be.
It's acknowledged. And then we have the file. So that's the way I'm taking it versus a blow-by-blow with what the person says. And then it also says, you know, if there may be provided a a response if appropriate, if it's deemed appropriate. That's another piece of it too. That gives people an expectation. So we're doing the same thing every time, every time. Or we're not doing, I think that was up to last time. So like, I like the comment. So we talk about that a lot. And there's one that we don't, you know, that makes us uncomfortable or whatever. And then we, you know, we kind of go quiet. This way it's the same. Across the board, we keep the file, but not necessarily because the minutes aren't a transcript. You know, that's another thing. It's not. Everything that you said, it's, you know, it's a synopsis. It's a recapturing.
And then are those files available to the public in the same way that the minutes are?
I'm not sure if it speaks of that. Let's just look at it again. I'm sure it could be for you. And I'm sure people can ask for them if they wanted them. And then if we have the file.
And we do, we do have a taped transcript of the whole meeting. And so the minutes are simply encapsulation of that.
Sometimes I forget while we're sitting here on camera.
But my my understanding of this is that any documents that come to us from the public. Are put in the library files. And with, I guess, with a FOIA request, those could be made, you know, made made available. But these will not go into the minutes automatically. I think that's.
Which makes sense because we don't, we don't put word by word. We don't say, then Ted said, and then, you know, then he explained. And then, you know, it's just. We discussed and that's what minutes are. So to me, it's a, that's why we don't do that. Because it doesn't really fall into what minutes are supposed to be, but we'll keep the file.
And you can see that we we are exercising homicide caution because we already in January. Put the comments made by two patrons into our minutes. And decided that, but it wasn't a policy.
I I just want to make sure that we're we're going to be consistent with the formula. Like you said, between. Written statements and people who are providing us written materials versus people who are addressing us verbally. We have a couple of people who. Do both provide a written statement and then also come and speak. So making sure that. Everyone is acknowledged evenly and that. That there's no difference in the response from the board based off of how how you approach.
Yes, that's the effort here in trying to have policy. We won't cover everything, but to your point, Roger, it's it's to keep it on the even keel. And to have the expectation the same across the board, whether it's a favorable comment or not. But if we file it, it's not that we won't keep it. And that's a good point too. You made said it's recorded. So there the comments are captured. And we're being filmed and it's on YouTube.
And and I would hope too that any patron who makes comment. Feels that he or she has has gotten a response. From the library at some point.
Right. Well, it says if appropriate, it may be provided. So that's not guaranteed either. But, you know, we talked about this too. If it's a continued conversation that's been responded to, there may may not be another one after that. So that's in there too. You may be provided. It doesn't guarantee it. It doesn't say that, but you do have the opportunity to speak and to be heard.
I mean, we also discussed before, if it's. If it's a statement that somebody else in the community, there may be a communal rebuttal. Or there needs to be a more broad discussion that. We have to wait for that to be an agenda item, rather than. Hearing out one perspective and then. Unilaterally commented for the for the whole of the community. So I think leaving our response. As if appropriate is. Is fine. I think there are other parts of responding. I think more internally, I think sometimes I'm still sitting here like, I know we responded, we're like, that response. I think that that might just be my organization that. We respond to a lot of people and and making sure that we all remember where they are and who responded. And because I know that's. That's generally the nature of staff to to handle those responses. So.
We don't promise to make everybody happy.
So it's it's up for you all to, if you have any edits, if there's anything you change, it's up for approval or. For the discussion or whatever, whatever.
There are several policies here, and I do appreciate that we received the. In in the minutes, the blow-by-blow, word-by-word changes that were made. I think that really helped to show what care people took.
Thank you. Do you want to pause and do this one or do you want to do the?
I thought maybe we could do them all since they have been, well, they have been in the.
I do have one more question. This is more just because. I'm super lazy. But we have in section three that an email. Would be sent to Jocelyn, heads to Matt. Can we make those more general? So like in ten years, we don't have to swap out names if we're, we have a different president?
Well, now we do have a procedure where we're reviewing all the policies. It's why you have so many. So we promise we will look at it. That won't be ten years.
All right, if you promise.
I do promise that.
When I read today, Matt told me that you couldn't make this meeting. And I read today on this that. Anything that's received by Matt or Jocelyn by four thirty P M would be public comment. And I thought, okay, but. Matt's off running an election. And the war, the Jocelyn gets this. So I think that possibly not naming names in the policy might be something.
So just say executive director and the library board president.
I would prefer it to be an and because I feel like the board and the staff need to be.
Right.
Notified for everyone to be.
Since these policies deal with everything from part registration to lots of other issues. Is it okay with with you all, we just approve the policies that amended? All at once? Or should we go to this blow-by-blow?
It's your pleasure. You want to pause and approve this one and move to the next one? Or do you want to do the whole series?
Well, how about that? How about we dive into the next one? If you get to a friend who are not ready.
Yeah, that's.
Does that sound like it's okay, Jocelyn?
Okay, so next we'll have Billy come up and walk us through the H R. Oh, that hours of work policy.
Yeah, the thing you guys all want to talk about tonight, hours of work. Yeah. You know, it's a it's a much, first of all, thank thank you and glad to be here tonight to talk about this policy. It's been eleven years in the making. So it's been eleven years since you've updated this policy. It's time. Essentially, it's it's all it's all brand new. But we're spelling out a lot of what we're already doing in the library. We're following, of course, we're following state and federal laws when it comes to hours of work. But we spelled out some things in this policy for our staff and for. Their supervisors to be able to manage to it. About the schedule, about spelling out what's guaranteed to an hourly hourly staff member versus a salaried staff member. And then. Timekeeping procedures, just that's got to be in there just to kind of say what's expected. And then reasonable accommodations to any any. As as needed, of course, we'll we'll. Have dialogue about that. So this policy has been reviewed by the chief counsel at HR Source and. To summarize a little bit and to brag a little bit, she. Reviewed it in about fifteen minutes, sent it back to me and didn't charge us because it was just that. That good because it follows the law. It's this is this is following all basic expectations for. Salary and hourly employees.
So you said most of this is already happening in practice.
Correct.
It's just a matter of getting our policy to meet what's actually happening on the ground.
Most of it. But I will point out a couple of things that are different. We're at the top, we are aiming to give two weeks' notice for schedule changes. So that's. That's something that might not be happening across the board right now, but that's something that we're going to aim to do going forward. And I've actually been talking about this with some of our managers and supervisors and they 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 don't see that as as an issue. It's just adjusting their timelines. So. The other thing that's a slight tweak is guaranteeing a thirty-minute unpaid meal break. Previously, it was twenty-minute, at at least twenty-minute unpaid meal break, but now it's thirty-minute unpaid meal break. That's. There's a number of reasons to make that change. Would you like to hear them? Okay, so, um. First, it aligns with our, um, recently, um, signed C B A or, or. Collective bargaining agreement with the union, they're guaranteed thirty minute lunches. Um, also, um. There's some debate whether or not a twenty minute meal period would need to be paid, any, any break less than thirty minutes. Does it need to be paid or not, and there's been some court decisions that decided that they should be paid. Um, so we're, we're cleaning this up and saying our breaks, our unpaid breaks will be at least thirty minutes to avoid that, that, that issue. Also, it guarantees staff enough time to eat and digest their lunch, um, you know, for thirty minutes. Um, and again, this is the minimum that, that we're doing, if they want to do longer, they, and they can schedule longer, that's fine, but we're guaranteeing at least thirty minutes. So that's spelled out the meal break. Um. And then another change, a slight tweak to what we're current, currently doing, is on per exempt employees. Uh, number four, paid time off, we're going to instruct our exempt, our salary staff members to enter time off requests in four hours. Or, I'm sorry, in full day or half day increments, generally speaking, that would be an eight hour or a four hour day. But not everyone is scheduled exactly eight hours.
Both ones are being done by hour?
Yeah, more, uh, it's kind of a mix, makes a match, but, um, some, some salary staff members are entering, entering them on an hourly basis. They're not hourly employees, um, our salary staff can reflect their time or not, the focus is on getting the work done.
I like, I feel like that often comes into play with things like appointments, do you all have like any? Benefit for employees around like medical appointments and.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, so, um, we have a health leave for our staff, we, it's, um, um. It was, last year about this time, we, we changed it from being sick leave to being health, health leave, because you can use it for a variety of reasons. And our staff have been using it for a variety of, of reasons, um, so that's available to, to all staff.
But I mean, I guess I'm just saying, like, wouldn't you need to leave an hour early or something like that?
Well, for, for an hourly staff member, they would put in a, uh, time off request for health leave. For a salary staff member, they're going to have to make a, a judgment call, um, uh, because again, we're giving them the instruction to. Half day or full day increments, it's an hour that you have to leave early for an appointment. Are you going to flex your time, are you not going to flex your time, is your work done for the day, are you going to come back on later tonight? The focus is on getting the work done, not on accounting for every hour that you were here or you weren't here. So, so the judgment call kind of comes up to like, well, was it a half day, you know, was it like a significant amount of time? And that's, and we, there are half day or full day is what we focused on.
Yeah.
But we do, I think you mentioned voting, voting leave, we have voting leave as well, it's a separate, separate policy. And I think that highlights most of the, like. Like the changes for our staff. But what I, what I love about this policy is that it clearly outlines the expectations for an hourly employee and what's guaranteed to an hourly employee versus a salaried employee. Um, and I think that, uh, as we roll this out to our staff, I think they'll appreciate it too, the clarity.
I think it's important to make the distinction, just like tonight, this is a weird night, you know, some of them have been here since the morning time. We might not leave till eight, and that's not, you know, an hourly person, that'd be overtime, that'd be like all different kind of things, so. Um, you know, they, it's needed, uh, for salary people to be treated like salary people and hourly people to be able to count their time, so I appreciate it too.
And that's not saying the salary people can't eat lunches, it's just, it's just what are, what are we guaranteeing, what are we guaranteeing?
But do we eat lunches?
Any other questions?
I had a question about the eligibility for full member benefits, is that something that?
I will, I will step aside. Anything else with the hours of work policy?
I have things I have notes from anybody.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're stepping into, um, the policies that are, um, more along with like the library card usage, I kind of think of. Like day to day library stuff, so as promised, these are the policies that, that would be presented every month. I have a, a really crackerjack team that works with me from the staff to review these with me, that include Martin Churchhouse. Jennifer Norberg and Barbara Sharon, who are all members of various departments within the library to help me review these. And so they, um, once we review and look over them, they go to the leadership team to review, and now they're here for you to see. So, um, thank you Ted for saying you appreciated the, including the drafts. So you can kind of, we can kind of walk through some of the changes, some don't have many changes at all. So like the first one, the card registration policy, um, there was some discussion about, um, just word usage. Like delinquency having a negative connotation, since we don't have fines anymore and that kind of thing, we're trying to get away from repetitive words. Um, and then, uh, so you can see some changes like that in there, that's one, um, and all the notes are on the side. Um, there was also. Just about the word overdue, we don't have, you know, we don't do that anymore either, um, to review, so there's updates like that, so you can see. We call it the dirty version and the clean version, so any questions about the library registration policy and the updates that you see?
I did, I did have a question about the eligibility for full member benefits.
Okay, uh, all right, we're, we're, if there's no questions, go with that one. What was your question on that?
Um, well, we have, we speak, of course, of the residents of Oak Park, and then, um, the officers of Oak Park businesses. Is this, what is an officer of an Oak Park business, is a police opposed to an employee? Um, I, I noticed that in the, the. Staff report, we reported that hospital workers were getting library cards. Now, they're not officers of the hospital, they're hospital employers.
Right.
Um, we very nicely said non-resident teachers who are employed by. A school or daycare, or our president, Streetbank Seven District Two Thousand, but what about library cards for, um. Domestic employees, or nannies and such, that maybe bringing children here, I mean.
I know previously we had said, we, we talked about this before, previously we had said that. Nannies or people who are working in a home, in a part, especially if they're. Serving a family that would fall under this policy, the thing that would be eligible for. An Oak Park card, essentially as a part of that family's.
And that's what I, I hope would be in, in this, and it's not in the, in the eligibility as we've written about yet.
Okay, so we were attempting to be inclusive in terms of people who are caretakers and educators of children, so, um, is the recommendation that we add, nannies.
Women.
Or, or caretakers of children, you know, people who take care of an elderly person or whatever, it's, um.
It is kind of part of a larger family unit, and we've gone to all this trouble of saying. Non-resident teachers, teaching assistants, or care providers who are employed by any school or daycare or park.
Yeah, the other thing is, because if we don't limit it, like everyone will have one. Um, you do have taxpayers who support the library, right, so one thing that is true to not forget is, if say the caretaker lives in Chicago, they can use that card here. Or if they live in Elwood Park, if they live in, wherever they live, they can also use the card here, so this doesn't speak to like every group that could be. Um, because they also have other alternatives, but this speaks to, if you get a Oak Park card, these are the people. Um, it, it's like live or work, which is kind of where the dividing line is, um, in terms of. Um, if you can get a card, but are you, are you all recommending that we expand the? Non-resident teachers part, is that what, am I hearing that, or?
Well, and to a caretaker or a nanny could apply, it should be just the child's card too. Right, so they'd have access to the program, I mean, services with the child.
And that's probably what they do, you know, they bring, they bring, yeah, the mom's card, or, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we could expand it, kind of, way, way over them, but I'm thinking of a, of a parent with dementia. And the caregiver wants to come and get the video.
But the caregiver could come, if they, you know, they don't have to live here, they can, whatever card they, they will register them here.
Okay.
But this is for a full benefit of the library card, we do have a little bit, a little, just to be storage of the taxpayer money. Because we are very open already with who we have the ability to card, so they won't be, so that they just maybe would use their card.
So I can get, I can get Mary Poppins for my agent fee.
Yes, if you have your Chicago card, or your War card, or wherever it is. Um, but this is for the full, like, if you want to go online, if you want to do like, this is like the full.
Which is that four hundred and seventy dollar non-resident. Fee.
Yes, it's okay, Jess, because now I remember, okay, um, can we talk about what the difference is between? Full membership of, of Park Library and being able to use the Oak Park Public Library.
So do you want to know what the full service benefits are?
I'm more interested in what I don't get if I'm not a full member.
So Elizabeth and Laurie, do you not get to use the online resources, is that right? And that's really, that's really it, like you can't, and some of those were beholden by the vendors. So we, like, we, we can say we have fifty thousand people, you can't have seventy thousand, you can't have everybody using, because then they'll need to charge us more.
Right.
So some of, so that's really, so how you don't have a full benefit.
Olivia, the, the.
Some of those kinds of things, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we are limited by the benefits too, so.
Okay.
Other, but if you come in with your card from other places.
Programs, physical materials, those things are also.
Videos, yeah.
And if their participating library has access to Libby or Google or whatever else. We can help them with that, we can, we can get that set up.
Absolutely, and probably if you took our park card there, they would say the same thing, like, you need to go back there, and if you wanted to do digital things. And use them at your home library, so.
Thank you.
I am curious, like, how do we have a sense, like, how many folks actually utilize this that are non-residents? Like I see the question in the margin, like, who's been issued staff library cards, but I'm wondering, even like the temporary courtesy cards, like. How utilized is this?
The short term of the employee cards. Well, there was some discussion about the employee cards, so what we discovered is, um, we just, we're going to do some more best practices about. Like normalizing that, like, when you onboard, you get a card, because, um, I think it's important if you work here, you know, how the card is used. And you don't say, oh no, I live in, I live in Elwood, so if you're using it, even if you don't live here, I think you could be a better. Employee, you could be more engaged, you can know how to use it, so we kept that there, um, and we made a, um, we made a, you know, we had a discussion about. Making sure that, um, we just, we give it to everyone, um. We keep stats on everything, so I'm sure we have stats about. As what, I'm sure that's something I could pull out and send to you all, um, when we get out of this meeting and follow up and give you a sense of who has. How many people are those, that's an easy stat to find, I don't have it right now, but I can get it to you.
I'll make a little bit now.
It's not, yeah, I'm more of a curiosity than anything.
I was gonna say, I, I'd like to see, like, all the sideways scenarios that are running through my head, even a thing.
I do have, I was looking again at that first policy, and I just had one comment about the breastfeeding bit. Um, I noticed that it said like up to a year, and I'm just. The A K expanded the recommendation to recommend that parents breastfeed for up to two years, so I'm just wondering.
Sorry.
That first policy, the, um, hours of work. Sorry, I'm going backwards, but I just wonder if that's. I'm sure that's again, like a very small number of people who are even going to utilize that, or, and I'm sure you probably know people that do anyway, but. I'm disagreeing with yours.
It's to align with the law, Illinois law requires one year. And originally, the, the attorney did make one adjustment, like saying to, to, to limit that to one year, I didn't have any limit on it, because. Again, as a. I have kids, I understand, like, like, just because the Illinois law says one year doesn't mean that's what we have to do. So, so she did add in one, one year, and then I modified that to say at least one year, like, I'm guaranteeing at least one year. And of course, we're the Oak Park Public Library, um, we'll, we'll, we'll meet our, we'll meet our staff with what they need, what their needs are. I just wanted to say, like, in policy though, this is what we're guaranteeing, and of course, we can go do more.
Are you gonna make it to the back?
No, I'll match you.
And next, the library programs policy?
Yes. Well, the only thing, it kind of goes into what you were saying, Virginia, um, about, and can Ted too, like not saying names. Of who it is, we are, we don't have a system yet anymore, and so that was the main edit, just to say executive director, um. And updating and not saying names, updating who the people are on the last part, but everything else stood. And so that speaks to who we partner with, um, who we do join programs with, and, um. Who that goes to, so that was the only edit on that.
And I think on the lost and stolen library cards, and simply trying to make the line be softer.
And we don't call it circulation services anymore, it's patron services, so that was an update, so it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm really. It, it's, I'm glad that we're doing this, just so we say updated, it's not ten years, this is next time we look at it, because things change, titles change, terminology needs change. Um, so this keeps us updated, so we'll see this again next year sometime, and every year after that, so we just, every month, we'll see. A group of them, we're working on the next batch now, so this was the batch for this month, so. Um, that's it for the policies.
I think we asked this before when the policy review started, but is there. I don't want to say is there an order, because I know there is an order to how you're doing it, but can you explain a little bit?
Sure.
How different departments or how you guys are cycling through the policies?
Well, one thing we are looking at is what hasn't been changed in a really long time, and that's one of the places we started, like, um. Some of them were from a very long time, especially these, um, so I don't. Uh, we look at the website, we're kind of going in order there, but that was one thing, definitely, if we haven't looked at it a long time, let's, you know, put our hands on that. Um, if there are ones for H R or something like that, we don't touch those, because there's law, so all these kind of ones just pertains to the day to day. Um, public facing, um, most, a lot of them nest in either public services or private services, so.
We'll click, I want to add something, we also, um, um, through R G W. They did a audit on, on our policies, so we're, we're also looking over the information that they provided for us on most policies as well.
Okay, so they did like an equity audit, was this this year, last year?
This was calendar year twenty twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is separate from that, this is just like changing things, like the wording we're using. Uh, we don't have what we do finds anymore, so if we did look at it, that, all that would be hanging out there, that's not accurate. So, got a two-pronged situation.
I knew you had a plan of attack, I just.
So, um, having taken the notes on these things, there, there are some minor tweaks, but I think.
May I, um, say that too, so I make sure I have them?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I'll be like, I told you lady to change that, you didn't do it, um. So we'll say the executive director and the library board president for the first, um. You want information about the short term residents, like, how many are there, how many people are we talking about? Um, I think we answered the question about the employees, and what's behind that.
Can, can I amend that to say? Can we look at? And I'm only asking because you said. Um, can we look at, like, anyone who doesn't fall in the. Oak Park resident tax pay, like, any that carries salary.
Sure.
Anything that's outside of that, that we've written in, can we look and see?
You want to know how many non-residents?
Of, of all the varying.
You have the ones that like pay that amount, right, so like get the card, I feel like we didn't actually know that.
I think the last time we talked about it, nobody had ever done it.
Yeah, that's it.
Because there's always like reciprocity.
There's like many places we can live, that would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Which was, which was surprising to me. And I often say to the citizens in this election year. Um, do you realize what it costs to have a library membership? And you're getting all of these things. For no more money than property taxes, but if you didn't pay property taxes, it would be four hundred and eighty dollars.
Yes.
Just one comment on that, there's state law that limits how you can do that. So like, if it's unincorporated area, where you wanted to give them a card, it has to be the nearest library district. And so, so that's where that comes in, so there's a lot of restrictions on what you can do.
So you, that's where that comes in, so there's a lot of restrictions on what you can do, and you can't just give out library cards outside of your district. Cuz they want the home library to be supported by their library.
I remember the last time you looked at this, or somebody was like, yeah, the nearest unincorporated is like.
South suburbs or something.
Yeah, like your southwest.
Yeah.
And, and you have to cross, like, seventeen libraries when you get to us or something, so.
And why would you pay, if you could mostly use everything here, and most of your libraries are digital ones, I mean, you just. I mean, I know we are lovable, but you'd have to really love us a lot, just to be like, here's four hundred and something dollars. It's, and you're already paying taxes in one way or another to wherever you live, yeah, so. So that was it for the policies, I don't know if you wanna pause for that, and then go through the resolution, um, but that's, that's really easy, but it's not a policy, so. Just, I don't know.
So this is an action item?
Yes.
The small changes.
So I'm, I'm hearing, we wanna know how many are non-residents, and how many do you pay the fee? And then the, um, the.
That was just background information.
Yes.
Executive Director and.
The library board president, I think, did I miss anything? Okay.
So may I ask for motion to approve these policy changes?
Some.
A second. All those in favor? Thank you. The next item is to assign bank signers for our various. And funds, and the principal for the Illinois Funds Investment Account. And this is to be a resolution, uh, that would, uh, allow signers to be Matthew Prue, the President of the Board, Virginia. Bloom, the Finance Officer for the Board, Jocelyn, the Executive Director, and Jeremy, the Director of Finance. This is to be signed tonight in the presence of Theodore Haas and of Matarima. So I don't know how we're gonna do that. Okay, so you have to be here by midnight, Matarima.
Um, do I really, though? No, okay. I, I'll be, um, I'll, I'll be, I'll be by. Jeremy, when do I need to come by to get the, get my signature? Hey, Matt's not here either.
No, but this, but this was amended to have my name other than that.
Oh, okay.
It just has to be approved by you all, and then that says who the signers are. It doesn't have to be signed tonight, no.
Okay, alright.
Jacomo Rosini was born on the twenty ninth of February, so he has his birthday once every four years.
But we have to do the resolution.
Yes, so, um, a resolution to name the authorized bank signers principal for the Illinois Funds Investment Account. For those four people, Matt Prue, Virginia Bloom, Jocelyn, Owen Dixon, and Jeremy Androski. Andrew Powerski, sorry, I was close. All those in favor?
Alright, so the, um, last thing kind of in this box, um, is the. Draft resolution naming the village of Oak Park as a book sanctuary, um. Again, uh, we alluded to this earlier, there was a conversation that Virginia put forth, and kind of gave us the nudge, so thank you for that. Um, looking at our neighbor, uh, Chicago Public, has really been the template for this, and they provided, um. Provided, um, a blueprint for other libraries to follow, um, and doing the same. Uh, you, I know you have seen all the challenges across the country, and the banning of books, and, um. It really does not align with a library for everyone, and what we do as a village, as a library, and that sort of thing, so. Um, one of the things I remember you asking me when I interviewed, is like, how do we combat this? And to me, uh, having a really strong message, uh, that, you know, we, we don't do that here, is important. Um, so, this is from the template from Chicago Public with, you know, with our twists in there. Um, I've already had one edit from that, and, and just making sure that we say. Uh, if you look at the collection part, that it says, like, we collect and curate, and just, um, offer. We have to really talk about what that means, so that doesn't mean we, like, gather every book that we see, um, on the corner, in the, in the basement. So people don't say, you said you collect them all, here they are, so you just said, make that really clear what that means. Um, so I, I have this as a resolution tonight, I, I wanna, it's a draft, it's not a done deal, so. Uh, maybe what I wanna offer is, uh, a few weeks to review, if you all wanna send some edits, if you have anything. That you wanna add, or any other edits like that to add to it, uh, I have a meeting set with the village manager, uh, they know about, um. Our offer to do this, or our willingness, or a desire to go forward with this. And there might even be an opportunity to have an ordinance, so not only a declaration, but, um, maybe even an ordinance in the village, which could also help the schools too. If they want to, um, you know, if they have to say, you know what, you can't, you can't jump into the school's business. And say, okay, this is what you all are doing, but if it's ordinance in the village, that would be helpful too, so we're not there yet, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but. Um, the village president and the manager are very excited about it, I brought it up at CAG, and so I have a meeting pending to talk about what this looks like. Do we, um, we wanna maybe do it by the summer, it sounds like, in June? Uh, we, we tried to do it maybe by, um, National Library Meet. At least that's too fast, and like, all the, um, all the emotional tears are, like, done now, it's March first tomorrow, so it's looking like a summertime.
So say, we have a summer reading program with a lot of the schools, and that they hand that information out before the kids go home for summer, so.
And the theme is something related to it, do you remember the theme, Lori, or? The theme for summer reading? It's something like. Yeah, it's something related to, um. What we're talking about, exactly like. Find your voice, so, you know, there may be a tie-in opportunity, that work show needs to kind of put together, in terms of how to put that out, so. That's just a follow-up proof that came from you all, so that's what's happening with it, I didn't forget, been working on it, and so this is where it is.
I did have a question about this, though, that, um, if we're a book sanctuary, we're not promising that if somebody brings this material here. We'll put it in the collection.
That's exactly what that said, so.
All of a sudden, you get some group that says, okay, we have the whole set of our religious groups.
Yeah, except, let's make that a little bit more clear, so people don't think that, exactly, yes.
Um, I'm obviously biased, and absolutely all this, and I'm super excited that we did it. Um, I'm glad it is only a draft for this evening, because I would prefer that the whole board or just more of the board be here. When it is passed, so that the community can see that we are a hundred and ten percent of this as, as an internal. You said you brought to CAG, are the school districts, I mean, is that the engagement tool at the moment with the school districts around us?
They were there, so they liked it too, but again, it's a different ecosystem, that you have to do, like, book, you know, like, kids. Reading scores and all that kind of stuff that you don't have to do as a public library, so the only thing I can offer, um, like I was saying, it might. Get strength if someone tries it, if it is an ordinance, it can be said, as a village, we don't do this. So, you know, this is, but they were, they said, oh, they, they like, so they heard it also. Um, so, I thought it was a good vehicle, just to kind of get, and get a pulse on what the thought of the village was, and then, so. I, I would have had a meeting already with Kevin, but he's busy, like, it didn't happen this week, so we're gonna reschedule, so I'm, I'm fully confident that. We will have this up and running by the summer, uh, with your edits, and then put to the board it goes out, so.
I love it, I do have a question, cuz I came across, um, the first time I've ever had to, like, request a book from a library, you all have everything. Um, and I requested it, it got denied, because I guess the publisher didn't, I, I don't know, the book distributor didn't have it. And then your staff referred me to the interloin, and so I did that route, and it's still was denied, and it is a banned book often. So I just wonder, like, in those circumstances, what do we do?
Depends on the book, um, it might, it just depends on the book, it can't, I can't make a blanket statement for everyone. How, is it, you know, how old is the book, is it old? Yeah.
It's, it's called steal this book, I feel really weird buying it, and I really wanna get it from the library.
So like, right, so it's not a print, is it, you know, so that, all that comes into play, not necessarily that they're banning it from me, but just the access to it might be. Hard depending on what it is.
I guess, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can, um, kind of highlight those cases, to me, that would be. Kind of practicing this in, in action.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, like, this is a banned book, yeah, that's why we can't get it, and so, I'm. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I don't.
I don't know, I can't speak exactly to the circumstance, but if it's from the seventies, it's probably more of that, that it's. Yeah, yeah, versus you can't have that, I'm, I'm keeping you from it because I don't want you to read it.
I know you guys wouldn't, I just, I was like, how am I gonna get this?
And then I had my book requests denied, and I have, um, it's often like, do you realize this is four hundred and fifty dollars? You know, and we just can't, we can't do that.
Literally the only person who wants it.
There's, there's always a good reason, but it's, it's never, I'm sorry, but you can't read this.
Cuz if we have, like, a hundred people do that, and at four fifty pop, and then you're trying to get the current materials, and they're trying to keep the whole list down. It's, I think it's probably more because it's from the seventies.
Okay, I think.
But the system does register, like, the number of people who request a specific book that's not available, right, and if we get to a certain.
Well, I'm not sure about I L Ls, like, how that is reported, um. If, if we say, like, twenty-five people asked for the same thing, especially if it's hard to get, it's out of print. If a hundred people said it. Yeah, if it's not available, or if, like, you know, I wanna be careful, so if I have that, still that book, I'm not letting it go out, so I'm not, you know, like, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, we think you're a nice lady, they don't, they're like, you know, I'll never see this again. And so people do guard it, like, you know, especially if it's a bad one, and it's a list, and it's something they archive and have, so.
Quite surprised this swan doesn't have Abby Hoffman's book.
But it is from, I'm not, it's from the seventies.
No, this is a part of Chicago history.
Yeah. Over fifty years.
You can read it online.
I'm sure, I'm gonna, I have to steal them.
Alright, so I'll, we'll send you a clean copy of this, um, I'm gonna put a date on it, cuz things need dates on it, so maybe like, March fifteenth or something. If you could give it to me, so then I have a solid one, and then I can go and compare and say, you know, my board has looked at this, I can go and confidently, you know, pop. It's not just, you know, everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
And I think that was the last bit of business.
Yeah, but I, I was making, I go, so, I do know that they're talking about. Uh, and then we'll be in May, and there's still discussion about how it will be, but. I have a fairly random question, while we're talking about policies. Um, are all of our policies only available in English?
As I know, can we, look, can we make our website, like, so you can see the different languages? Anyone? Know the answer?
That's my, that's my symbol for money, yes, I was gonna say, cuz it's not like a copy, we can translate and make it go, right, the thing with policies, there's. There's more nuance to the language than that, but, um.
I still don't understand why Chicago ballot's serving Polish.
Are they really not? Um. I, I like that to be something, like, long-term, that we look into, is making things. More accessible outside of just being in English.
Our website for everything.
Yeah, especially as, I know, we're expanding the Latinx and Spanish-speaking availability of materials. It makes sense that the policy and other materials that we have online, we request that as well, we can try to expand from there. If we see that there are other populations that, that need to be served to the same extent.
And it is a diverse community, so yes, that is something we should look at.
Technology makes translation much easier recently, and giving example, like, like, in Polish, American, and working in that communities in the past. Like, comparing to sense when you have the goals, how difficult it was to understand something written, if I want something in paper, yes. It's important to translate, but online, Google and other browsers match, make things much, much easier. For to translate, so basically, I would say this point is, but how much we can also highlight and make. Those future, which became standard with browsers, eh, for people to know how easy it's translating to languages. That is one part which I want to highlight, that it would be perfect to have, like, translated in multiple languages, but maybe also impossible. But technology is out there, and it's much more accessible.
Maybe we can highlight within the, within the website here, simpler ways for you to translate the digital materials.
So I'm seeing websites, I say Google translates in the corner, so you'll pick which one you want, out of maybe three, not every single.
More like educating, educating, again, part of what we want to also, what is part of our mission. Eh, also help others how, when you're in digital, then it's much, become much easier to translate English, so you look at that language.
Can we look into doing something along those, I do know about, yes, thank you.
And I'm sorry, uh, Jocelyn reminded me, I went out of order, and we have item eight, additional reports. Intergovernmental Committee.
And the message you just said.
Yeah.
I agree, um, I was not at the meeting, um, simply.
Who was at the meeting for?
Matt, uh, Bartodji was able to attend, and there was a really good meeting, but before that meeting also met Bartodji. Lori, Alex Skinner, and I, we met with Leonard Green, and we talked about collaboration and our initiative in terms of. Eh, like, our part for, for education, education about sustainability. Eh, what we can do with programming, and also with eh, eh, shared resources, sharing information, so. It was, it was shared during that meeting, and we are really, really committed to this, I want to share this with excited, also, say thank you to Lori, working directly with us. And also with Alex Skinner, then we are committed to those initiatives, we will be much more active. And really will be promoting more information and more, more coming, so, so.
Happy to see in, in the staff report that Alex Skinner is making the climate action report available in all the branches.
Yes, yes, this was part of when we became active, when Village was working on the, on the climate plan, this was the first time we worked. In closer collaboration with the village, and right now, we continue this collaboration, and, and plan to expand also to other managers and so on. Here's where we are, exciting, exciting things, and we want to do more, and should be able to do more and report more. During next few months.
Speaking of the other libraries, I have that meeting on Monday, so it's, um, Broadview, uh, Ridge Forest. Um, what's the other B, I always forget, Bellwood. Uh, we're all meeting to talk about what we can do as far as missions, that's one of the things that came out of that. Um, executive meeting or whenever that half-day summit was, like, what can we do where you are? Um, so they, those directors are all very excited about that, they just did get a Maywood, um, director, like, about a week and a half ago, so we'll move that person in as. As soon as possible, but, you know, we're thinking, maybe we can go on grants together, we can get speakers together, or programs together. Um, maybe it's a little cheaper, if, you know, and maybe a Broadview or another library, um, can't do it, or even Ridge Forest, that is very small. But if we, um, do, you know, like a swan, or like, we do, like a collective, we could maybe do so much more. So we're gonna explore it, and we're excited about that, so that's on Monday, so, um, more newsletter about that, so that's related to Monday. Lori, do you wanna give up?
Oh, well, my meeting with Russ. So, um, President of the Friends and I, uh, Russell and I met to talk about planning the book fair in July. It'll be in July this year instead of August. So, um, they're gonna start, uh, collecting, we are gonna start collecting June one, so it'll be six weeks of collection. For the fair, um, we're going to have it on all three floors instead of two. So it'll be, um, children's and A V on the first, fiction on second, and nonfiction on third, which kind of corresponds. For the most part with how the library is laid out, so it should be understandable, where you can find the items for sale, um, trying to think of what else. We decided.
The date of the actual, so, or the dates?
It's mid-July, whatever the Friday is. It's mid-July, whatever the Friday and Saturday is, like, I want to say fifteen, sixteen, something like that.
Or do we collect, or do they collect at the all three branches or does it mean?
Does it mean?
And is it in the lobby?
We'll have it in the lobby again, you can drop off, and it'll be Saturday um. In the alley for big deliveries. We did that last year, it was like four hours, and. The friends volunteers are there to receive them, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, that'll be good. Um yeah, I think that's it.
I'm very happy to see that there there are various friends of libraries throughout the country having newsletter now that they give to book dealers. To say, oh, on July fifteenth, there's gonna be a book sale in Oak Park. And so all these people who are selling books to a leaver, so they, they know where to go to pick up these books for fifty cents per dollar. And then you can get, steal this book for fifteen dollars for a leaver.
I think the other friend that's a member, right, are they having a?
Yeah, Walter Griffin is gonna speak and that, and so that's coming up, I think. This week or next, next week, are you going to that, Jocelyn?
It is on my calendar, I think it is next week. It's a trivia night, I think.
Yeah.
Like they're trying to recruit members, and then they're also trying to honor, like, members and raise money, and so they're having this kind of exclusive of that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think we could ask for adjournment.
You can make that in a letter.
Thank you.